Everyone, we're going to call this meeting to order and Mr. Duhany, let's get rolling.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we'll provide city council with a presentation on the Rudy Loop Park Design Options. The next voice you'll hear will be Michael Kirschman to give an introduction to our presenters, and then after that, we'll stand by and await city council questions and feedback and comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Mayor Duhany, Michael Kirschman, Parks and Recreation, and it's my pleasure to be here to unveil the draft vision for what Rudy Park could be in terms of transforming it into an iconic world-class park. I'm not going to steal any thunder. I'd like to introduce Clay Dills, who's the lead. He's going to introduce the entire team, and we're going to get right to it and show you the results of all of the public feedback, all of the input, and what this park could be if the decision is made to move forward. So, next up is Clay Dills.
Welcome again. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Vice Mayor Wilson, Mayor Dyer, council, thank you so much for having us here today. As Michael said, we're ecstatic to share with you our final draft, master plan and design for Rudy Park. With me today, and you'll hear from, is Kona Gray with EDSA, one of our lead designers on the landscape architecture side. We have Brad Howe with Scape Studio, also landscape architect and lead for the project from that side. Greer is here with Beederman Redevelopment Ventures, if you remember what they do. This is park economics, programming, revenue, but also operations. And they're currently doing that at Bryant Park and other places nationwide. Last but not least, we have Harry Davis with Sussex Development Corporation, who's here. We brought him on the team early on as a cost advisor, as a constructibility advisor, so that we, when we're designing a park to a budget, we're working to an actual budget, real-world market conditions, and Harry will speak to that later. So, this is our master plan and design, and we'll start first with a bit of an agenda. This is the sequence of our presentation, essentially, I'll talk a little bit about engagement, our design goals and process, how it came to be. Then we'll go deep into the project. That's the bulk of our conversation. Greer is going to speak to park economics, operations, programming for the park. Harry will then speak to opinion of probable cost. That means what we think it'll cost now, and he'll speak to that. And then, a little bit on cost participation opportunities, and then next steps at the end.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I also want to let council know that in two weeks' time, Parks and Rec will be coming back to brief city council on this project and garner key decisions that we need from council. So today, what we're focusing on is getting council and the public more acclimated with the design concepts, and to garner your feedback on those design concepts. When it comes to certain elements of what to include in the park, parking garage or surface parking lots and things like that, we'll be coming back to city council in about a two-week timeframe, you know, to kind of talk about those different elements and to seek your guidance on that one. So this one is really kind of absorb the design and then give us some feedback on the design, and we'll talk more about the semantics and the details in two weeks.
Great, thank you. Just to touch on engagement, which has been a large part of what we've done and what we've put into the park, we held citywide meetings across all districts, in every district. We did eight primary, open-house-type meetings, community meetings on those, among many other stakeholder meetings, groups, focus groups, over the last 10 months. This included surveys that were put out, digital presence for those, web and social media. We've connected to over 14,000 people on this project, which is an amazing number for us. This is a big turnout for community engagement and public response. That means 58,000 roughly data points and written comments that are over 3,000. Huge turnout. And I'll say, you see at the bottom there, this little meter, we put that on there because overwhelming support from everyone that we talked to, to ensure public access, public space and green space, as well as access to the water there. Everywhere we went, that was a priority. From that, and if you remember, we used visual imagery to get feedback, get support from those. These are the top five images from that, and we did this in multiple iterations. These remained the five for the last few engagement cycles that we went through. Natural ecology, a mix of active and passive uses on-site, naturalized built elements, so if we build something, don't overbuild, don't overdevelop, but make it part of the natural park features, and connect to the water and views, right? So we're water on three sides, and it's important to everyone to be proximate to that, to get near to that water and feel the energy from it. Last but not least, we heard over and over again, we need to remain authentic to Virginia Beach, to what we are. That's who we are, who we are in that place, and who we are as a city across all districts of our city. So a little bit on our design goals and process. So, we early on formulated five goals, and this is a quote that sort of summarizes that, and I just wanted to reiterate. So bring back nature to Rudy Loop, connect the whole city to the authentic culture of Virginia Beach, and do it with a world-class destination designed for all the generations to come. We actually heard that from many people, that we're doing a park now, that my kids, my grandkids, my neighbors want to be a part of. We heard that across the city. This has been an inspiring image for us. We put it up there primarily because we love it, and it tells us so much, the unique character of that site, why it's so important to so many people. Just having water on that many sides of an oceanfront park is incredible, from the jetty, the ocean, the Rudy Inlet, Lake Rudy, Wesley, the Marina. Situated in that unique position, it demands an incredible design. So, we came up with this diagram early on as a way to address those three sides of this. How we open up to those, how we open our arms to the beach, to the channel or the inlet, and to back to the resort and to the city. How do we connect the whole city to this park while engaging all of those primary features that are near and proximate to Rudy Park? And if you remember our last steps of engagement, so we came up with three options. These options were really, they're not to pick a winner, to pick one of those and say, yes, that's the one to do. It was really to test ideas. So three, that tested ideas out of that, you see, we got a ton of feedback from people that said, do this, don't do that, I wish it was this. We put those things together, and that's what you get in our plan today.
And so here's the plan. So, we'll talk through this, we'll talk through the overall plan, and then we have some zoom-ins to kind of walk everyone through each of the three key areas. But as Clay mentioned, there's really these three zones. A zone that opens up to the beach, a zone that reaches out towards the water along the inlet, and then a zone of the park that reaches out back towards the city. And so I'll start with, as you're entering from the Virginia Beach boardwalk, as you encounter the park, there's what we're calling a beach village, which is an active plaza that's meant to really be this exclamation point at the end of the boardwalk, and really kind of put the anchor of program at the end of the boardwalk. And then, at the more urban entry at the end of Atlantic Avenue, there's what we're calling the water plaza. And this is this really kind of big welcoming moment. A lot of members of the community were excited about an interactive water feature, and so this is where that will be housed with a sort of like iconic vertical water element, with steps that step down towards the water. And then as we move back into the park, at the entrance where the Virginia Beach Trail connects into the park, there's more community amenities, like a large, open, sunny, grassy lawn, called the community lawn, a lawn that opens up towards the sunset. So, we know the boardwalk is iconic for its sunrise views, but there's actually some pretty amazing sunset views on the site as well. And then a nature play and area to picnic as well. And so, what's really interesting about this is we heard a lot, from a lot of folks, a lot of excitement about a shared-use path that will connect the boardwalk to the Virginia Beach Trail. And so you can see in this thick gray line that runs kind of in and out along the water's edge, really providing a waterfront experience that is both bikeable and walkable and wide enough to accommodate both, and really stitches together all of these program elements. And you can kind of see some of the little stats, how each of the community feedback really filtered into this final park design. And then, the other thing that we're really excited to share with you is, we heard a lot about, we want to get up and see the views of the ocean. And so in this kind of pink squiggle mark that you see here, this is designed as an elevated walkway to get people up, and gives you 360-degree panoramic views, views back to the park, views out over the beach, and then views to that large southern expansive ocean as well. And so, from loop, what we know today is surface parking and a loop to a world-class destination oceanfront park, where you can see how at the end of the boardwalk, there's a jetty walk, the beach village, which is this active plaza with F and B bathrooms and shade, the water plaza, which is that real central heart and community gathering space, and then steps down to the water in the two open lawns. So zooming into the beach village, here's what we envisioned the beach village could have. So you can kind of see this open central plaza. This is a space that can be really activated with program, boardwalk swings, loungers and decks that kind of open up to the water, give people a place to sit and relax. And then, of course, the elevated walkway, which gives those views out. And then we have beach parking, which is accessible parking to the oceanfront, as well as amenities like food and beverage and bathrooms and showers. And so you can see here how that is in three, with this 3D zoom, they have the central activated space, two elevated overlooks that point out towards the ocean, and then you can see the water plaza in the back. And I think Kona's going to come up and join me and talk a little bit about some of the eye-level views we have.
So this is amazing. Here's your before, right? You're all familiar with this, right? Just imagine if it was this. Just imagine if we had this opportunity to bring people to the waterfront, to the oceanfront, to really experience what it feels like to be there from all parts of the community, and see all different aspects of just driving towards living well here in Virginia Beach. So, places for our surfers, places for people coming down the boardwalk, places for everyone to experience what it means to be on the oceanfront. And this whole idea of getting up and seeing the view was something that we conceptualized really early, and we weren't sure about it, but boy, was it something that people responded to. And it's so fantastic to imagine being up and being able to see the ocean from this amazing vantage point that you don't have to pay for, right? You're up there, and you're able to see the view and really see the whole expanse of what this place is. Brad?
So and then if we move to that central plaza area, this is really that kind of big urban entry moment at the end of Atlantic Avenue. And so there's a lot of opportunity here to create something iconic. And so you can see here, we have the water feature, and that image of the water plaza was a really popular image with the public, and what we're calling an iconic water feature, which we'll show an image of in just a moment. These steps that really step down towards the water, which was another exciting element that the public really responded to, and then giving people a moment to both be on that jetty walk, but also kind of get down closer to the water's edge and have this closer water experience on these rocky ledges. And then, as you can see at Second Street, a plaza that could be anchored with an iconic piece of public art and a shaded grove for folks to sit on picnic tables under the shade. And so this is, you can see here, how it creates this open gathering space that really cascades down to the water's edge. And then, as you approach from Atlantic Avenue, you would be greeted with this, which is this large, community, open plaza flanked with seating on the edges under shade, and this, what we're calling the gateway to the ocean, which is that elevated walkway that forms this just path directly out to the water. And then the iconic water feature, we're really inspired by kind of taking these sculptural dune seating and lifting them up into a celebration of the waves of the ocean through a water feature. And then you can imagine, as you move down towards the water, kind of getting closer to the water's edge and having a more natural immersive experience, either sitting and looking at boats pass, or even getting down and getting closer to the life that actually grows in this part of the area on the rocky structure. And so finally, moving back to the lawns and play area, as the Virginia Beach Trail connects into the park, there's these two open lawns. The community lawn is about an acre in size. It's designed to accommodate large events, but also smaller community events, like a public movie night, a small market. This is really an open, grassy space that's meant to support community uses. And then the sunset lawn, which kind of cascades down towards the water and gives you a view underneath the overpass of the sunset. This was also, I think a lot of people, when we presented this, were surprised that you could get sunsets views here, but not the people that knew the site the most. They were like, the sunset views are incredible here. And then, of course, the nature play area between the two lawns. And so you can kind of see how this could really be transformed into a very active community space. There's a pavilion that can support rental for events, as well as bathrooms, obviously, for the play area, a picnic grove where parents can sit under shade, have birthday parties, have food, watch their kids play, and then these two larger lawns against the Third Street promenade.
So what I think is wonderful is when you start to dive in deep and actually feel it. So imagine yourself walking down the trail and feeling this experience and being immersed in nature. We know for a fact from studies that nature makes people feel better, live better, healthier. These are the reasons why we love parks. So, this community lawn, the nature play, the amazing native planting, all these things will be immersed for you to enjoy. And I love this space. This is a great space for community. This is where parents and families can come together. They can just, you know, spend a little bit of time at a picnic, throw a little birthday party, be together where they can really celebrate life and celebrate being here in Virginia Beach, one of the most amazing places in the world. So, we're going to kind of bring this full circle and close it out. So again, this is an aerial view that really, really demonstrates the transformative opportunity here. We think this is just quite the amazing place to create. And we all work all over the world, and it's just amazing to see something like this come to fruition here. And so, from connecting to the jetty walk, to the beach village, having that sort of, you know, exclamation point at that area, and then the water plaza that draws you down along Atlantic, and then having all these different pavilions and opportunities for public art. But what I think is really most important is all the ways we connect to the water. This is where it really matters. People, we heard that multiple times, where people come to the oceanfront because they can't see the water from where they live. And being able to do that, I think, is really an amazing opportunity to show the community how much you really care. So, Clay, you're going to zoom in and show us all the different areas.
And really, you know, the jetty walk was high on everyone's list. And I think, I think this image really sums up what happens down there. The jetty walk, which is coming off, out into the ocean, off of a beach village that anchors the southern end of the boardwalk. You know, right now, down there, it's undefined. This gives a reason and activity, multiple activities and action down there, and a purpose to be able to reconnect to the water out along that walkway. And you can see the shared-use path and the water plaza on the left, and how those things work together between the boardwalk, Atlantic Avenue, and back to the Marina. And then, where Atlantic Avenue comes from, as Brad said, and Kona so eloquently summed up, having a plaza, this sort of iconic moment, that is the terminus of Atlantic Avenue, as well as the boardwalk there, that brings visitors to it and unlocks the ocean at this gateway to them. So it's a park, and this is our beating heart of that park, that opens the space to every visitor. And then along that water's edge, we create these inlet overlooks, some fishing areas, but a way to get closer to the inlet, to that waterway, at those overlooks, right off of the shared-use path. And then another one around the corner, heading back towards the Marina, you see the sunset lawn on the left there, and then being able to reconnect to the water and keeping these things distinct. We heard that over and over again, like keep the shared-use path separate, give people space down there, and allow for multiple things to happen at one time, especially near the water. So zooming back out on that again, you see here the, how the two lawns work together, connect across the shared-use path down to the Marina side, the Virginia Beach Trail and its connection there. This anticipates the Marina becoming part of this, that we envelop all of the waterway along there, up into the park. So we're entering at the VB Trail, we're entering Atlantic Avenue, and we're entering at the boardwalk. And here, you see Atlantic Avenue coming up by parking. We could have that roll right into the Third Street promenade, which becomes a pedestrian plaza and onto a community lawn. This is movie night. And so with that, and with our current thinking, we went back about the conversation about structured parking and options for the lot that's north of Third Street. The good news is that we were able to figure out how it could be surface parking here in that same location and get very close to the count that's out there now. We thought it was important to create this overlay, and it creates opportunity for allocation of budget, but it was a good test for us to figure out that we can do that surface parking here and keep all of the park elements, keep the world-class nature of a park from Third Street South back towards the water intact while doing that.
Hello. So parks can influence the neighborhoods and cities that they are in. We have three examples here that have been built and have had a wealth of new developments and current existing developments see an uptick in their profit. So, in Clyde Warren Park in Dallas, Texas, it was built in 2012. The budget was $110 million. Most of that budget went to capping the highway that is actually under the park. The actual budget of the park construction was around $20 million, and these numbers are for the time that they were constructed, not adjusted for today. And since Clyde Warren Park has been constructed, we saw an uptick in rent in existing areas, and also a $300 million new development, and there's also a $1 billion development coming in as well. Then we can move on to Levy Park in Houston, Texas. That was constructed in 2017 for a budget of $15 million. And it also has two multimillion-dollar developments coming into the neighborhood soon. And then lastly, we have LeBauer Park in Greensboro, North Carolina. That was constructed in 2016 with a budget of $10 million, and they're also seeing a lot of new developments coming in the area. Suffice to say, parks are good for neighborhoods and cities. Then, there we go, sorry. Parks can generate their own revenue. So with, we have created a conservative estimate of $1.5 million to $2 million in revenue that Rudy Park could generate, and then that would go back into the park for operations. So how do you generate revenue in a park? You have a healthy programming plan that allows for ticketed events, or events that can be sponsored, along with other activities that would be free to the public. You also have food and beverage options that create a wealth of rent for the park, and you have other means such as merchandise that go to the park, operations, park rentals, and park donations. In order to have a park that will be the successful at generating revenue, you need people coming into the park. So, on a day-to-day basis, you're going to expect activity in Rudy Park. There will be amenities so that people can come and enjoy the park at any time of day, games carts, where you can have board games, lawn games, really anything can exist and people can enjoy. It could be ping pong, if you will, excuse me. With a healthy programming schedule, we expect the park to have 2 to 3 million visitors a year. That breaks down to 500,000 to 750,000 a season. And if you want to look at that on a day-to-day basis, which is depicted on the screen, during off-peak hours, so when there isn't a large event going on, but more of a, you've walked into the park at 3:00 PM, and there might be a kid's storytime playing going on, but that's it, you would expect, we expect 200 to 300 visitors. And then during peak hours, so lunchtime or after work, we expect 500 to 600 visitors. And we also did a very conservative estimation of a $1.5 million operation budget for this park. So as you can see, the revenues will, in time, meet the operation budget and be able to self-sustain. So how does a park, like Rudy Park, get managed? We have been considering this because the management of a park can influence design, and so we do have details coming further, but from a high level, we think that Rudy Park will benefit from a joint operation between an in-house team and the city, a hybrid, if you will. So, that's looking more about the middle of the screen to the right-hand side. Generally speaking, parks that are managed more in the right-hand side of this scale are capable of responding quickly to any issues that come up, adjustments made to programming schedules, the needs of the public, and that is really important for the long-term success of a park. Additionally, parks that are managed with more of a right-hand-side style have an easier time gaining channels of revenue and private sector support. So that's how we see the park being able to support itself long-term. Next, we have Harry.
Okay, so it comes down to the point where everybody is waiting for the next couple of slides. And what we've assembled is based upon our charge. Our charge initially was to put together a design and costs for not only a park, but a parking garage, and that number is, in my memory, was $60 million. And our cost and assembly of numbers to date have been based in current dollars, current costs, and then adjusted for a perspective of a 2027 construction timeline. This is truly a crystal ball thing. I can tell you today what I can buy something for today, but as we all know, in the current market, it is hard to tell you what tomorrow will bring, much less '27. But we, you'll see in just a second, that, what we've done. So, our first numbers coming up here are the park with the parking garage. And so we've got the parking garage component, and that parking garage at that price tag would be 350 spaces, and then an allowance included in that for retail and rooftop activities, and then park construction, bless you. The park construction at $30 million, $332. So, we've, as you can see here, we've added a contingency because we're just in the first stages of design. At 15% design, there's really not a way to set a firm number to that. So we've added a contingency for unknowns. Some of those unknowns would be potential things underground, as well as some potential design clarifications or modifications as we move forward to full design documents. The escalation component at 10%, that's where we're projecting to '27 numbers. You would probably end up buying it in late '26 for implementation, constructing. constructing within the 27 timeframe. And then we've added the piece of full-time third-party city inspector is something that we understand will be in need of the city. And in this specific case, that full-time inspector is actually two parties. One that would overview the parking garage and one that would overview the park itself. So you have essentially two concurrent projects going on. Soft costs include not only the design completion from 15% to 100%. The construction phase services, as well as some other needed things that would be associated with permits and, and the like. And then an allowance of $1 million for furniture fixtures and equipment. So we've got a total of 70 million, 458 for the original charge of, of the park and the parking garage. So keeping in mind that this is over, over our original budget, but at the same time, understanding that maybe the, the budget has been somewhat modified since we first met with y'all, we moved to this one. We went to park with surface parking. So we, we tried to evolve as this has been going on since the beginning. And so we took the parking garage out. We did not take the parking out for surface. So this right now, the park construction includes the way the park and Third Street surface parking. If you think back for just a minute ago, Clay made a presentation, one of the slides he brought up that showed options on parking. And one of them was a parking garage option and one of them was a surface parking option. This takes into account the surface parking option. And again, we have the contingency and escalation. The full-time third-party inspector reduces, if you look at in comparison to the previous slide, because this is a one-project scenario here. And then the soft costs are modified slightly because your design fees come down and a couple of other things. We kept the furniture fixtures and equipment because that mainly is applicable to the park itself. So as you can see, the bottom line, we're at 42, 638, 400. So I think we're, we, we hopefully have addressed not only the concept of one not being, the parking garage not being in there, but also the, the concept of trying to evolve with a, with a ever-moving budget on this.
We wanted to briefly address opportunities for cost participation. Now, what do I mean by that? And we've heard through the engagement process and from people in, in the city and groups in the city, how can I be a part of this? How do we, how can we make this part of what we do as well? This is from individuals to bodies to boards who have reached out on this. And so I just wanted to go over some of those that happened. And we've, we vetted those with Beederman. This is sort of normal practice, especially in public spaces, public access spaces like this, where it means a lot to so many people. So the top of that list is generally naming rights. So that would be the, at Rudy Park, right? The community lawn as brought to you by, right? That and sponsorships often look similar to those, but it's signature features, signature elements of the park that someone wants to be a part of. Those, those are normally either one-time or they can be ongoing as sponsorships over multiple years under contract, essentially. Sponsorships are similar to that, but those can also be about events and programming in the space. Beederman does this really well and has given us a lot of great advice on how to do that. That would be the Friday night movie night as brought to you by, right? The Surfer's Morning Coffee as brought to you by, right? All of those elements. And there is a ton of those elements in the park. Last but not least, we've heard from people that would like to donate to this to make sure that it happens. For those, those are the most heartfelt for us. Those are the ones that really mean a lot. This is about someone who wants to be part of something that won't happen again in their lifetime in the city of Virginia Beach because it means so much to them. We think those are a big deal and those people have a desire to do this. And then last but not least, is really related to industry, in-kind donation. That would be a contractor who says, I'd love to build the elevated walkway and I'll do it, I'll do a large portion of that for an, as an in-kind donation. Or I'll, I'll help with the operations of the park. I'll put the sod down annually for the next 10 years as so long that I can be a part of this important project. And so this is just a glimpse of some of those opportunities, right? You can imagine the nature play area, right? This naturalized play space that someone is a part of and they feel connected to. We have Gromit Island right there, Gromit Park. We can like link those together as a inclusive space. The event pavilion for sure is a naming rights sponsorship opportunity. The inlet steps, it's not only a naming or sponsorship, but it's an education opportunity. There are higher education folks that would love to be a part of that. The water plaza, of course, as we enter from Atlantic Avenue, the first thing that greets you in the park. Our beach village, obvious, an obvious gateway to the ocean. And then those, those incredible ocean overlooks. And so we have a, a video prepared. Thank you, Anna. You see the jetty walk there, back through the inlet, looking towards the beach village. The inlet steps off the water plaza. There's the sunset lawn, looking under the overpass. You see the shared use path, a parking structure onto that community lawn. And then coming up Atlantic Avenue, right? This is our southern terminus as the park opens up. Community lawn and event pavilion, parking, right? Or water sports parking down there with ramp. And then you see the plaza at the end of Atlantic Avenue that brings you to the village. And then the village opens up, opens up to the ocean, opens up to the views. And I love the end of this because it really shows how we tie the boardwalk, Atlantic Avenue, the resort into the waterways there, into the rest of the city. How we reconnect the rest of the city to this world-class park. I swear this will be the last time I go through it. And in both scenarios, surface and structured parking, Third Street becomes this pedestrian plaza, this sort of gateway to the park in that community lawn, opens it up. A lot of what we've done is tried to figure out how we can stage events, let them happen at Fifth Street, keep the park open at the same time, be able to figure out the logistics of that, be able to let multiple things happen at once. So next steps. Really, we're, we're here to finalize the master plan, the design for the park, all those elements that we just discussed. That means getting a decision or some direction on parking, structured surface, so that we can finalize the master plan, design for the park. As Patrick said, Parks and Rec will be back on June 3rd to brief you in greater detail about these same, same design and other issues. And then we'll produce a formalized final design document and report for that. And then the last two items on there, this is really us taking a shot at timeline, right? So August 2025, if we started design then, it may take up to a year to finalize construction drawings, get it bid, be able to get it out on the street. And then construction from January 27 through December 28. So ribbon cutting, cutting in '28, which would be incredible. Thank you so much.
Before I open it up, let me just suggest that, you know, we, we need a lot of parking decks around. Would it be prudent to have parking decks, but have, you know, some type of revenue generating whether on the first floor or even, I can see a spectacular restaurant with a view on top of this thing that would help pay for it.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that is as designed right now for the parking structure. So it, you see upper left there, those are, those are a, that's a tiered parking structure with retail in the bottom and rooftop observation-type restaurant, bar, food and beverage on top.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, Stacy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A great presentation and so I'm a fan. I'm not trying to rain on your parade, but I do have some questions. All right. Seem to be a lot of water features in this park, a lot of fun things that to me, I see as a maintenance nightmare. We have a fountain in town, town center that we can't keep water running through. And we have a lot of water features here. We have salt air here, 365 days a year, which just eats the life out of things.
Yep.
A lot of green foliage, which I'm sure Mr. Allman has given you some really great direction on which should be planted, but tough to maintain. And I know what it's like. I mean, I have a, my yard is not even a hundredth the size of that. And I know what it takes to maintain my yard every year or every month. And I can only imagine what the maintenance costs of this are going to be. And trying to keep things up and working and viable is concerning to me.
Sure. I guess that's two parts. First about the fountains. The, so we heard that early, early on when we started talking about spray nozzles and water features and all those, we heard from Parks and Rec almost immediately and kind of vehemently about that. So we consulted two separate water feature designers who said, here's how, here's how you do it if you want to do it down there and not end up into a maintenance nightmare. The first step is don't bury tanks and pumps and things underground and rely on subsurface drainage to bring it there because all you do is suck sand and salt all day into it. Keep it on top, right? Keep it on the surface so you can get the sand out of it and the salt out of it and you keep it clean and it can run much more often. You, you eliminate 90% of your issues by not doing that. So we went through those systems. That's why you see that today. And actually, the water feature, the falls underneath that is actually where the mechanics would be, and there's a pool there that is a sand trap so that you can get that out of there. You're right, WPL, Billy Allman has, has weighed in heavily on this. He and Kona know from our resort, the struggles that come with that. I think, I think first with trees, and he's, he's certainly beat this into me. It's been a parking lot for, forever. We need to uncompact all those soils or nothing will ever grow there. That's job number one. Job number two is to protect with things that will survive so that you can grow the things you want, right? So if you look at this, we're really, it's a gradient from the ocean back to more trees as you get off the ocean. Our natural tree line, if, if we hadn't, didn't have a resort, would be on the west side of Atlantic Avenue. That's where we would start to grow trees. So you see everything forward of that is either a tree becoming smaller and then scrubby like dunes. So we're replicating what naturally protects and allows trees and things to grow. So when we get back to the natural, the nature area, that picnic row and the lawns back there and you see more trees there, it's because they will more likely grow there. I will say we're, we're looking at the 20-year snapshot of trees here, to your point. Brad's saying 50 here. But we think that they can survive. That, that's the point of this. We don't think all of them will survive. So, and we, we have to do, there's sacrificial things that you can do and we have to do protective things to ensure the horticulture, horticulture choices here live.
Next question I have is, one of the concerns that keeps coming up is that currently the space is used as a staging area for whenever there are events. If there was not structured parking there and we had surface parking, would that space be able to be used for staging area for, would it be adequate for a staging area for beach events?
That's another good question. Yes, the answer is yes. So we, we've met with resort management a few times. They certainly prefer surface parking. Right now, we're mostly asphalt out there and they enjoy that for that. We also talked to them about doing a higher-level structured parking on the first floor, like a 14-foot first deck, something like that. They said that's, doesn't quite get them where they need to be. So we have studied this, the Third Street Plaza, the community lawn, that segment of Atlantic Avenue and the area where you see the structured parking now as lay-down and logistics. You also note that we're keeping parking up front with the ramp access as it is now for those same reasons. But, but from a staging standpoint, they were very clear that the surface parking works better for them. And our, if you ask the public, and we heard loud and clear from everywhere we went, that we need the parking in a, in a similar number for water sports and activities. But we also need to keep the beach open when we have an event down there. So for us, like pushing that north a little bit, where the event actually happens, helps a great deal in de-conflicting those two things.
And then I guess this is more for council and for the city manager. I see some, like you shared, some incredible naming rights and sponsorship opportunities here. I mean, in the multi-millions of dollars range. And so I would strongly encourage, we're going to go forward with this plan, that we, if we don't have already on staff, that we have somebody devoted exclusively to the development, Development Director, to start charting out what types of sponsorships and naming rights would be available and soliciting those now because I think it's a multi-million dollar, definitely a multi-dollar opportunity. We need to start now, not when we get further down the line.
And that's, that's why we brought Beederman on the team. I mean, that, this is the, the best national talent for helping structure that and how it happens. By their estimate, that number should be in the $5 to $10 million range.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Mr. Cummins. That's the, that's going to be one of the elements that's going to be covered when Mr. Kirschman briefs you all in two weeks. And to your point, from my previous experience, I've seen where the construction of the cost was subsidized by the public government as well, but also received tremendous amount of dollars for philanthropic support, but also the programming and ongoing operations, like people were, were paying for different programs that happened or even for maintenance programs in the park as well. So I think to your point, there is a lot of people and we've received a lot of interest so far of participating with this, not just for a one-time sake, but also on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, the, the events, like reoccurring event programming is a huge opportunity. Movie night in the park every Friday night as brought to you by. That is a, that is a big opportunity.
And Mr. Mayor, to add again, this is one of the things that Mr. Kirschman talked about, but a lot of that also really depends on what kind of structure you have. Like if there's a partnership between the city and a 501(c)(3), it does help facilitate it a lot, you know, in terms of getting philanthropic support and moving this project forward.
And Stacy, if you don't mind me saying, we could always give naming rights a priority. All right, here's next. Josh, did you have your hand up?
No, but I'll go.
What do you want to make?
Don't josh us.
Hands off that one. But thank you so much to all of you for the brilliant work you've done, the incredible, incredible presentation you gave us, the community engagement you've, you've undertaken. I mean, what'd you say, 14,000-plus people you've touched? And thank you for coming into District 9 for some engagement with lung people. I, when, when they had asked about, you know, spaces in, in our city that might be good to reach people, non-traditional ways, I guess. I thought of the most iconic loop I could in District 9. That is, that is a good skating rink, by the way. 9, that is Haygood Skating Rink, by the way. So they came out and talked to a whole bunch of people out there. It was great. I've got a ton of questions, and I'll save those for an email later, and those can be addressed. But I love the idea, now that we've got Phase 1 of the Virginia Beach Trail funded, to have like a beginning and a terminus, and you know, now the mission is to kind of fill the in-between, and what a wonderful, and I mean, just iconic terminus this could be. And I'd love to learn more, and I'll ask some questions about the ownership/operation model, because I think that's, that's a critical piece. And the dollars and cents, I know they're, you know, throw a dart and try and hit something, but the million dollars FFNE for the park kind of seemed a little on the low side to me. But then again, I've never built a park before, so I don't know. And I mean, otherwise, I mean, it's just, it's beautiful. I love all the natural elements. I love the connecting, you know, connecting people to water, but also raising them up to give them views, and really well done. Thank you very much.
Outstanding. Anybody else with this point?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Thank you, Mr. Dills and the team for everything. As Councilman Chilman just enumerated, all the work and the engagement and whatnot. I just have a couple of questions. I will also send some questions, but to the city manager. Page 47, I also want to echo what Councilman Cummings talked about, and that's the yearly maintenance cost, the $1.5 million. You've got some numbers to back all that up and some, because it's like...
Yeah, we actually, we had Beederman run the numbers. You know, they're engaging operations and operating parks themselves across the country right now. So they're using data directly from that.
That includes like management, park management, as well as replacement of things after 10, 15, 20 years.
Includes some capital improvement, right? So that's sort of brought out across the years. You know, every once in a while, there's a larger expenditure.
Deferred maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay. Next page, page 48, we just spoke about that. Well, I guess we'll learn later, Mr. Manager, about a conservancy and the private ownership and that, that type of, how that structure works. It would be, we still have control, but we don't want to lose control of this precious land.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, the Councilmember Remick, that's, so Mr. Michael Kirshman's going to come in two weeks. He's going to brief City Council on steps that we need to get guidance on you all from before we move forward with any construction and make sure that we're all on the same page in your expectations. And then in that timeline, as we get closer to getting design elements complete, right, we'll come back to City Council before we put things out to bid to kind of talk to council on how do they want governance and operations, and we'll bring a model or models for council to consider. You know, but basically, in two weeks, we're going to be trying to seek guidance on council on certain elements of the design, verify yes or no on the parking options, so that we can let Dills and his team know what to do to finalize the plan. And then before we go forward, putting something out for a bid for construction, we'll come back to you all to give you all an update, and then I'll ask you all and give you all something to recommend, recommend something to you all regarding operations and governance of the parks, including like possibly a conservancy model.
Okay, just one other comment. So a big part of construction, and Harry knows this, is soil conditions, and that could blow a budget, as it has on many other projects. How much due diligence, geotechnical, any, how far into the earth have you really gone in?
So, Anna, I forgot how many borings we took.
About 18.
18.
Okay.
Across the site. Not, not the best soils, but not the worst for Virginia Beach, I will say. What you're, what you see here is, it does take some fill. If you remember being out there, if you walk, if you drive as close as you can to the boardwalk, you're roughly four feet lower than the boardwalk. So we think it's incredibly important to raise there between Atlantic Avenue and the boardwalk so that we can easily connect and make accessible those connections between the boardwalk, the beach village, and back to the water plaza, Atlantic Avenue in there. That's... Second. Are you talking about just shooting it in there?
Just on the logistics part, can you go back to that picture with the parking, you know, the parking garage and the opens park, parking?
Oh, the two versions of parking?
Yes, whichever one shows a picture with the...
It might take me a minute to get there.
Okay, so we gave up, and I know we're not talking about parking, this is more logistics and some other things, as having been a part of this over the years, and I would think talking with CVB and them and how we've turned that area into like a festival logistics kind of thing, and then when you add in your public safety, if you have in like the surf, you know, the beach surfing stuff, we park the rigs because they're not exactly in service, but they're gonna, if something big goes down, they get pressed into service. So that space that we're going to be using, that we have now, is nowhere near what it is currently, right?
I mean, that's a sizable lot.
No, I'm talking about, we have the whole loop right now, right? We have...
We can't get back to that.
No.
It's asphalt everywhere down there right now.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry, I know the answer to this part. I'm kind of doing what Michael does, I'm talking, explaining a little bit, then I'll ask the question. I mean, that's a positive, buddy. I mean, that is a positive. I said at the beginning, I said at the beginning, I've got some experience with this park. So that's what I'm saying. Sorry, I did not mean that bad. You know that.
I'm taking it as a compliment.
It's not enough room, is what it is. We will have to change what we're doing. I feel very strongly about that. If you go to put a stage at Fifth Street that we've done before, and you have all the parts that go with that, and all of public safety and everything else, we will have to change our model somewhat. The southeast parking lot of the convention center that we talked about putting a parking garage, before the garage goes there, can we use that for hard steel and all the other parts? That's going to have to be included. Are we going to park, which is fine by me, are you going to park police and fire on Pacific or on Atlantic? We're going to take up some space. There's going to be some change. I'm not trying to get into all this, I'm just saying, when these guys speak in a couple of weeks, that might be something that we should start to vet out so that we don't get caught shorthanded, is what I'm afraid of. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, to Councilmember Hutchinson, you're absolutely right. I don't even know if we'd be able to even fully vet it out for when we brief you all in two weeks.
Oh, I don't either.
I think it's just acknowledging, if we move forward with doing this, it is going to be a sea change in how we operate during the summer, especially when we put on festivals. Not saying it's not workable, but it's going to be different, and there's going to be some other compromises in the resort area that we're going to have to probably bring forward to council and ultimately discuss with the community and resort stakeholders as well, because you can probably still do some of the things that you've done here, but that's probably less than half, and then we probably need to accommodate other things in other places throughout the resort area. And we got limited space, and even if you use a resort area, now you're moving things a different kind of way.
People are going to have to be okay with that. That's what I was kind of getting at.
And we started down that road with CVB and RMO, you know, just in that discussion, acknowledging that something does have to change down there to be able to do all this.
Thank you.
Hey, Rosemary. And then, I mean...
Thank you so much for that, the two areas I was interested in. So you mentioned to be with the naming rights, all of that, to make sure I get that name as well. But on this page for visitation and operation, where you mentioned so many annual visitors, at a certain time, it all fits. Who or how are you going to get this together? In other words, there's the rest of the beach and the oceanfront, and just what Councilmember Hutchinson mentioned, when you have that many in this small a space, what are you paying?
So, yeah, there's, you know, it's spread out across annual visitation. It's averaging, in-season, we think it's around 500 to 600, off-season, 200 to 300. Now, that number could actually go up as well, because we're talking about things like winter village, you know, wintertime uses that really activate the park in that season. But in the peak hours, these things are spread out, and people aren't always getting there by car, right? So this is the boardwalk, this is hopefully transportation other than by car on Atlantic Avenue, and then the connectivity of the VB Trail, I forget what our numbers were, but like in the summertime, I think we were over 10,000 bikes a day when we did the counts out there. There's a really large biking community from the communities that feed that. So we're hoping that the car, the parking that we have, can pick up the cars so the rest of the city can get there. That's primarily how they'll get there, and we actually studied that during engagement. But then, if you're at the resort already, you are for sure walking, biking, or taking the, one of the other modes, down. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for bringing longtime Billy Allman to this, because he has lived experience with this. So thank you for including him.
He has kept us in check, for sure.
Rosemary Worth had one more question.
If I could go before Vice Mayor Wilson, and that's just to opine for a minute, because there is some discussion in the public about the amount of investment here, in this case, $42 to $70 million versus other investments in the oceanfront resort area, much less across the city on the heels of our passing the budget last week. And it's a worthy discussion and debate that we should have, healthy discussion and debate, because you do get a return on your investment. In this case, I think this is a beautiful concept, the two choices. At the same time, we do have other needs. At the resort, we've talked about Atlantic Avenue, we imagine we're downsizing that. We definitely are in need of parking in the Central Beach area, as well as around the Sports Convention Center. So I think, is the resort, or other stakeholders in the Resort Advisory Commission going to be seeing this presentation soon?
Yeah, shortly.
I'd like to have other public input.
Yeah, we, you know, part of what we did, and we have data that Parks and Rec could bring from Beederman about the economic impact, Currier touched on that, but that it's not, it's not the revenue number, it's what parks do as public space, right, economically around them and in those vicinities. We think, and when you look at the numbers, that there's, there's an opportunity here for that, to rethink the southern end of the resort.
And also the aquarium, we need to make sure we reserve some discussion about the aquarium. So just bring that up for a discussion. Thank you.
Hey, Josh, then we'll get to Rosemary.
I'm going to reserve my comments. Yolda Rosemary, thank you.
Well, I'm not quite sure where, yeah, this whole presentation is just very powerful and overwhelming. There's so much to absorb, and I think I may need to sit down with you. We're one to really fully understand all that you've brought, but first of all, I want to thank the council for all their comments and questions so far, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot more to come. But you really, really listen to the public. I mean, it's just incredible. The surfing community, and I think having that surfing parking area for them, because they like to go first thing in the morning and be able to go there and have their coffee and surf and beyond. They were so concerned about that, and the fishermen. Just think about all the families, and it's going to be, everybody's district is going to be able to use this. And I love that it starts with the VB Trail, too, and we'll all tie in together. It's just a pretty amazing thing to bring our entire city together. But I also think it's going to bring people to put heads in beds. I mean, people, people love a good park. And, you know, we have other amenities, too, but they can come and see this, and they can see a concert at the Dome. And it's just, just really, really going to be amazing. And you've done an incredible, brilliant job.
Thank you.
And the numbers, and I think making the numbers work is going to be really important. And having a way to, we're looking at sustainability in almost everything we do these days, and things that have, all of a sudden, that means maintenance, and all these things we've been doing in the past, all of a sudden, now we've got to put money in maintenance. So you're taking a real broad view of the future of this park. I agree with Stacy that sponsorships and naming rights, and not only does it bring in money to help save the taxpayers, but it's the community involvement, the ownership that they have for this park, because I've been calling this the people's park. I know you call it Rudy Park, but this is the people's park. It's, you know, we started buying all these parcels one at a time, and it started with the lighthouse, and it's supposed to be for commercial development, but after time, I think we've pretty much all come to realize that this property was bought with taxpayer dollars, and it's meant for the people. So I think that naming rights and sponsorships are going to be really important, and I think that's going to really help with the bottom line. I said probably six weeks, two months ago, that I support the surface parking. I think the important thing is to get it built and to keep costs down. And let's see, how successful is it? At some point, it may need a parking garage, but right now, I think it's brilliant that you said we can do just about as much parking as there is now. I don't know how you've done it, but I don't know if you, what your magic is, but it's really incredible. I think that that's, that's the way to go, especially for now, and that will help with the staging and all of that for the things that we have to have staging for. But surfers, we listen to the public, and, oh, the jetty. That jetty is going to be amazing. Imagine the walk on that jetty, to walk out there and see, and it's just sitting there now, and we're not able to use that. That's going to be an amazing amenity, and just, there's so many things to talk about with this, but I'm just really excited about what you've brought to us today. I know we've got a lot of details and a lot of questions, and we've got to get this out to the public, but this is really going to be...
But, you know...
...the best quality of life by Forbes Magazine in the country.
Yeah.
This is one of the reasons why we have something like this. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, thank you all very much, very well done. Hey, great job. Okay, we're about ready to get going.
All right. Great.
Hey, Mr. Daheny, just wait a second. Okay, we're good to go.
All right, so Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, council's going to receive a briefing on the 17th Street Improvements Project. The project is getting ready to start moving towards construction, and staff wanted to brief the council on the scope of the project, but also potential challenges that may proceed during the term of the construction. The next voice you'll hear is Emily Archer, Economic Development Deputy Director, followed by LJ Hanson. Should you have any questions? Thanks, bye.
Hello. Afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As Mayor Daheny just mentioned, I'm happy to report we have a successful viable bid within our funding available for 17th Street. So now that it's real and about to happen, I want to make sure everybody's aware of the coming improvements and the anticipated construction duration associated with that. 17th Street goes way back. There's an aerial up on the screen from 1937, when the original infrastructure went in. There's aging utility infrastructure out there, including water lines installed in the 1940s. You can also see a photo on the left from 17th Street and Atlantic Avenue in the 1950s. But fast forward 80 years, and in the last decade, we've been looking at 17th Street as well as the central, in the context of Central Beach, and all the development that's occurred there. 17th Street redevelopment was a priority of the last two Resort Area Strategic Action Plans. There were two typical sections in the vibe connectivity plan, and the first phase of funding came in 2017. It was fully funded, and last year's capital improvement budget, it is funded for the Torres Investment Program at $48.8 million. The recent low bid that we received came in at $42.7 million on April 30th. Today's presentation is really just Phase 1. There are cracked, this is kind of a section of what it, depiction of what it looks like today. It is about an 80-foot right-of-way with undersized lanes that aren't to current standards. They're very narrow. You're driving in the gutter most times. There's cracked deteriorating pavement, sidewalks, undersized lanes, as I mentioned, but also the inadequate utilities underneath. There's quite a bit of utilities with this. We will be, we don't need a ton of acquisition for this because we're staying within the right-of-way for the most part, but we will be utilizing the full width of the right-of-way kind of like never before. So you can see a depiction of what the proposed condition will be for the pending improvements with adequate-sized lanes, wide sidewalks, improved crosswalk, accessibility upgrades, street trees, more vibe district identifiers and bike racks, bicycle lanes, traffic, new traffic signals, pedestrian signals, curb and gutter, everything to current standards, and then the associated underground utility upgrades, including all the overhead lines going underground in a duct bank. This will build upon the existing streetscape improvements like Laskin Gateway, 29th Street, 19th, 18th, and Winston-Salem Avenue. To drive it home, it's kind of what it looks like today. This is looking east on the north side of 17th Street. Proposed rendering of the wider sidewalks, bike lanes, and more birds in the sky. This is looking west from the intersection of Arctic Avenue and Pacific Avenue. You can really see kind of the widening that's happening and taking over that full width of right-of-way. I'll do it one more time. So you can kind of see, if you look to the left, where the right-of-way line sits today and how we're going to be utilizing the full width of that right-of-way moving forward. The utility infrastructure unfortunately is not a quick or clean process. This is about a three-and-a-half-year construction process, starting with the deepest, most critical infrastructure first that's deep underground. Putting those underground utility lines involves a big duct bank. The image on the right is a duct bank from, that we constructed on 19th Street. These are very large vaults underground. You could park a minivan in that thing. The image on the left is a new vault that recently placed in Winston-Salem Avenue. So you can see the kind of construction that is anticipated to occur, especially in the front half of this project. No matter what's closed when, the contractor is required to minimize the total road closures at any time, coordinate with the property owners and the tenants during construction, maintain safe access to the businesses at all times, and provide wayfinding signage specifically for those businesses and for the Vibe District as a whole, much like we did for 19th Street. I mentioned this is a total about three and a half. It's a total four-year contract out there. It is anticipated to begin in October 2025. There are four phases outlined here for construction. I'll break them down for you in the next slides, but the durations and the timeframes listed here are estimates based on, and subject to change based on weather and unforeseen conditions, especially once you start uncovering underground conditions. So Phase One, this is again the kind of the deepest stuff, the water and sewer improvements. There will be full block closures, but this is going to start in the winter time, right? So there will only be one block closed at a time and be done by the first summer of, from, by May 2026. It should last about six months. There will be detours on both 18th, 18th Street. It'll be the official detour at this time. Phase Two is the longest one at 18 months. This is the duct bank construction and the south side of the roadway improvements, but two lanes will be open at this time going into the first summer and through all of 2027. So you can see the two lanes will be on the north side. There will be block closures on the side streets to the south, but again, only one of those is permitted to be closed at a time. Phase Three are all the north side improvements, so the lane shifts to the new roadway on that south side. So again, there'll still be two lanes open, but this is all of 2028. And then finally, the early 2029 last of it is the lighting and landscape improvements, where there'll still be three lanes open, and they'll be working to get in the final most aesthetically pleasing touches here at the end. So next up, we, starting with you all today, we definitely want to let everybody know this is coming. So we have a robust state corridor engagement plan, a communication plan being worked out. You can see, starting with the Resort Advisory Commission, Vibe Creative District, the civic leagues in the area, the Second Precinct, 17th Street Gateway Association, and a meeting just for all of those along the corridor that'll be directly affected. They'll have mailers to the tenants and the property owners at that time. Similar communication efforts are currently underway for Winston-Salem. There's like an email address set up. People can subscribe for regular communication updates about the construction, have a way to contact the project managers directly with any kind of concerns or things that come up during, during the construction and the project team. I do want to thank Public Works, our project managers for this, and our WSP, our engineers of record on the project. They have, they can answer any hard questions you have today. But thank you.
Okay. Any questions at work?
Thank you, Mayor Dohany. Thank you, Ms. Archer, for your support and your work on this. It's a really important project for that part of the resort that's much needed. The point I want to make to the public and the colleagues here at the table is that the bill payer for this project, $48 million for four blocks, is the tourist investment program, the TIP program, not public, not the general fund. And as much as the TIP fund really was designed for projects, the decision that council made to put this in the budget was that this is much needed. It will help unlock the vibe in that part of the, of the resort. It's an eyesore. It's probably a public safety hazard that return on it will be on fourth, but the bill payer is the TIP fund, not the general fund. And some folks are not too happy with that, but I, I support this. Thank you.
Hey, Rosemary.
This is really one of the gateways to the oceanfront. We've got 21st Street, we've got Short Drive, and there's 17th Street and Laskin Road. And look at this picture. The outside lanes on the street that's there now is only seven feet wide. Think about how terrible that is. And the inside lanes are only 10 feet wide. So when Worth talks about it as a safety hazard, it truly is. And so with what we have going on down there with the 17th Street Stormwater Project, that and redoing this road and the Central Beach area, this is going to be part of the transformation of this whole area of the beach, which is one of our gateways. And it's going to be a game changer. And there's going to be, you talk about new development, I really believe it's going to really affect, a lot of those old businesses didn't really want to invest in anything because the conditions were so bad. There was flooding. We've seen pictures of terrible flooding. So between the Stormwater Project and this is going to, flooding should be stopped, and it's going to be just beautiful. I looked at that picture, I just couldn't believe they were going to make it so beautiful. But it's going to be painful. It's going to be three years of pain. The projects, think about having your kitchen ripped out of your house for three years and all that going on. So it's going to be really, really difficult, and some of these businesses are probably going to have plenty to say about it, but it needs to happen, and it's going to make a huge difference. So we were happy that the bids came in within budget, so that's always a good thing. It's going to be a game changer.
Hey, Amelia.
Yes, I support this project, too, because I was there at the beginning when we first did Vibe Creative District and trying to get around the flooding. So I support Councilman Remick and Councilwoman Wilson on this. It is important. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else at this point? No, thank you. I think there's another high priority and just keeping up and doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, it's time to have a discussion, the discussion. As we all are painfully aware, we had a terrible incident over the weekend which adversely affected the residents of Sandbridge. And if anything, it highlights a need, you know, it's a need that's been around for quite a while. And, you know, we're going to talk about, I'm going to ask the manager in a second. No, as a matter of fact, right now, Mr. Dohany, if you can just give a background, and then I'll tell what we've been doing for the last couple of days.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I think as you all probably know from the emails and then definitely from phone calls, especially Councilman Henley, because I think her and I talked to several times over last week on it, is that there was a accident one night, I think it was Thursday night into Friday or something. I may, maybe off by the day, but there was an accident on Sandbridge Road that took out a lot of, took out several Dominion electric poles, right? And also took out some Coxen Verizon infrastructure, led to a significant closure of that road. It led to such a long closure that we had to open up the Dam Neck gates and in order to ensure that we can get a general sense of the public being able to move through the area, because as you know, Sandbridge Road is the only road in and out of that area. We probably, we weren't able to get that road open and the traffic cleared and all the infrastructure repaired until about 5:00 the following day. So there's probably basically about close to 20 hours that the public did not have access to that road. And then we also had to pull a tremendous amount of police resources away from responding for calls for services to help ensure that we can keep Dam Neck and all the infrastructure and all the things that happened there safe as well. It's something that we've been pushing, the council have been pushing for years to get that, to get Nemo 7B addressed and moved forward. As the council know, that project is fully funded right now. We were moving forward with, in line with the guidance we received from the federal regulatory permitting agencies to do an environmental assessment. And upon moving forward that process, we received another notification to move towards an environmental impact study, which added several years to the project. And that is probably, that's what, that's the reason why we're not able to move forward with this project at this time.
You know, if I could say, and then I'll get to Barbara. You know, when I first, you know, moved down here from the People's Republic of New Jersey, at the time on Lynn Haven Parkway, there was a piece of wetland between Indian River Road and Centerville Turnpike. And this was like forbidden land. They would not let us touch it at all. DEQ, Corps of Engineers, everybody. And regrettably, you know, it was, then I became the district guy. I moved down here in 1990, and it was there. And, you know, when I first got on council as the district, I tried to mitigate in, you know, deaf ears. Then unfortunately, you know, emergency response time to that part of the city where there were, whether it be an ambulance, whether it be a fire truck, they had to go down, divert off onto Dalrymple, go around, and maybe add another five minutes onto response time down to that part of the city. We were able to get that open and get Lynn Haven going, but unfortunately, it took a couple fires with fatalities, and it took a couple of heart attack incidences where, you know, it could have made a difference. And unfortunately, through adversity, it was the opportunity that we had to get the Lynn Haven project open. And you can go from, right now, from Lynn Haven to Greenbrier Mall with no problem. And emergency response time, and maybe in a little bit, Hutch, you can talk about that. The point is it took an emergency to point out and put an exclamation point on a problem that has been there for far too long. I've had some, you know, conversations with Senator Craig, who's over the area, and Barry Knight, who's over the area. And, you know, just, you know, I think one of the biggest problems that we've had, the problem, is that a lot of the delay has been totally out of our control. It's always been something. First, we had the EAS, and then all of a sudden they whipped the other study on it. My friends, that's three years of delay that we can't afford. And, you know, just to highlight it, if I recall back when I first became mayor, we got predicted that we were going to have a Cat Four or Cat Five hurricane come. And I had a, we had a, I had to do an evacuation of Sandbridge at that time. And what guided me in making a tough decision was the fact that that one road, you know, could have been, you know, disastrous in terms of egress. And it turns out, the storm totally missed us, went up to New Jersey Hurricane Sandy and devastated the Jersey Shore. So we're not messing around with this stuff. Sandbridge is vulnerable and has been vulnerable for years and years and years. And the point is, though, I think we have to do, you know, send a message to our folks in Washington that they have to get on board sooner, quicker than later, that this is an emergency situation. Can you imagine if that happened, you know, during a time when an evacuation is necessary? And the manager and I also called, yeah, we got Dam Neck, but there are going to be situations, especially on the world stage, where we may be denied access to that. So I'll tell you what, I think that we really have to, you know, step forward and, you know, maybe get our lobbyist in Washington involved. I don't care, full court press on this stuff, because, you know, shame on us if we don't. Barbara?
Well, maybe this was the emergency that happened that will spark something, because I think there were three distinct different elements of individuals needing emergency service that was delayed. And when you're talking about that kind of episode, it's, well, it's, it's truly a life and death situation. And I felt so good a couple of years ago when we finally reached the point that we were fully funded on that road, and I said, well, we're going to be able to go through. And then lo and behold, they hit this environmental impact study on us, and that just stopped everything for at least three years when, and knowing what is going to increase the funding level, then we're going to be back to needing funding. So I just don't think we can wait for that to happen. I think you're right. And yes, the back gate at Dam Neck is an option, but that takes a while because we have to position police officers there and they have to be pulled from other places. And there was a lot else going on in the city that night that the police officers were needed. And so that's not a good option. But now, of course, and I've mentioned this two or three times, when we've been talking about our flood projects, to even and say that the intersection of New Bridge and Sandbridge can't go forward until they have this environmental impact statement, that's adding insult to injury, because that's just, I mean, that's such a clear situation with an existing, with existing roads that need something now, not an environmental impact statement. So whatever we can do, I know it was, it was because folks at the federal level and the state level stepped up to it that we were able to, to fully fund it as it was. And, and so maybe we can just pull some of that leverage together and say, wait a minute, we just can't, can't wait. It's going to take several years once we get started. So, I mean, we can't just keep delaying. It's, it's, but I think, too, that maybe in the future, whenever anything happens on Sandbridge Road, we need, need to immediately start the Dam Neck opportunity. And I know that they're not excited about that over at Dam Neck either, because they're, they're very secure, and they have to make certain that their mission is, is maintained and secure as well. So it's not an easy thing to just say, okay, you can start going through Dam Neck. It's all got to be in place. And so I really think this is something we've got to look at immediately and, and ask the folks at, at other levels just what kind of assistance we can get. But what triggered this environmental impact statement, I don't know. I mean, but has anybody ever figured that? Because we were, we did the environmental impact assessment because we thought that's what was going to be required, and then lo and behold, at the last minute, they say, oh, no, you've got to have a full environmental impact study, so.
So I think, Council, if you recall, we were at the guidance of our federal
But what triggered this environmental impact statement, I don't know. I mean, but has anybody ever figured that? Because we were, we did the environmental impact assessment, because we thought that's what was gonna be required and then low and behold, at the last minute, they say, oh no, you've gotta have a full environmental impact study, so.
So I think, Council, if you recall, we were at the guidance of our federal regulatory permitting agencies, we were moving forward environmental assessment. And then as part of that process, we received comments from, I think, two federal agencies, EPA and Fish and Wildlife, and also I think the Southern Environmental Law Center provided some comms, provided some comments regarding evaluation of Sandbridge being the alternative. And we provided information of why that does not make sense. And we were pushed towards doing the EIS and basically that's the guidance that we were given, that in order for us to move forward with this thing, we need to move to an EIS, because if we were to proceed under EA, it's likely gonna be, the project would be caught up on their injunction and then that would exacerbate the timeline even further than moving forward with the EIS. So that's the position that the council was placed in, where you have no choice but to move forward with an EIS to get the project moving forward. To Councilmember Henley's point, the only alternative when Sandbridge is closed is Dam Neck, and that's a, that's a difficult proposition to get the Navy to be comfortable with. The current standard operating procedure with the Navy is if it's gonna be a half a day closure, that's when they'll be willing to open it up for us. I do wanna say that if Sandbridge Road is closed and there is a need for an emergency medical response or police response at the Sandbridge, we do have understanding, an MOA with Dam Neck, that we can get emergency response vehicles through the base by reaching out to them and contacting them. So I don't want the people to think that if Sandbridge Road is closed, we can't get emergency medical vehicles or police vehicles or fire apparatus through there, you know, but it is not ideal at all.
Could you speak to that, Hutch? I was just gonna ask that.
Just real quickly to kinda go with what Ms. Henley's saying and Patrick's alluding to is.
Say, I can only remember three, four, maybe five times, we try not to ask, we do everything we can to not ask to go through. They've always been good on a public, on a response. They, they always said that. But we have had, at least on two occasions that I can remember, where they said no to us and then we had to tell the residents, if you leave, it's okay, but get a hotel room, because you can't come back, you know? So we, we couldn't do that, you know what I mean? So it is, it's not, it's not ideal. Now, I don't know if the federal government's gonna care at all about that, but we are in a rock and a hard place when it comes down to there at some points, for sure. And then just even asking, and as, as the captain changes, so does, so does the answer sometimes. And then if something is going on in the world, it doesn't matter how bad it is for us, other than the response, they can say no and have said no, for sure.
Well, there's also kind of the scary thing that even with Nemo seven B built, it's gonna come in to Sandbridge Road a little ways up. So still, that last time into Sandbridge is gonna be one way in and one way. Of course, we have about completed that project and, and, but we were able to do that because it was an existing road and we didn't have to have, I mean, we, we got that done. That's why we divided it to be Nemo, I mean, two projects, because we knew that we could do that, because it was an existing road and we were able to get that done. And, and that project went as smoothly as I think I've ever seen a project go. So we do have that last entrance now much better, but it's still one way. I mean, and then it will remain one way into Sandbridge, even with Nemo seven built. I mean, that last section is gonna be.
Got water on both sides, so we're not.
Yeah, but at least it's better than it was.
Yeah, Patrick.
And, Council, the mayor requested, and he wanted to talk this out with the council today, because he's asked that we work on preparing a correspondence that we would send on the council's behalf, that he would send on the council's behalf, bring in this incident to the attention of our federal delegation and also to Senator New Craig and I think other members of the delegation, of our state delegation as well, so that they can use whatever resources they have to impress upon the federal regulating agencies, the need to expedite this process post haste as soon as possible. So we'll be working to put a document together and then we'll share it with you as we correspond with our federal lobbyists and then engage with our delegation to see if we can get some relief sooner for the residents of Sandbridge.
Rose, ma'am?
Well, I think this just shows what a crisis it has become and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, Fish and Wildlife has never wanted that road built. They tried to buy that property probably about 2002, but they couldn't get nine votes from this council, from the council. That didn't work out. Then they tried to lease that right of way, couldn't get the votes, couldn't get the nine votes. So we, we actually could have lost the right of way. So I kinda feel like, because they wanted to buy it and they wanted to lease it and then they, there's all this obstruction going on, I just don't think Fish and Wildlife wants us to build that road. So I think it's time for us to, we waited long enough. It's, it's a dangerous situation. People could die. I mean, people could be inconvenienced and that's terrible enough, but, you know, people could die from this. So it's time to put a full court press on the feds and, and we may be able to get a better response at this point. So we've got great lobbyists and if that means also to have a delegation from here go up to Washington, get the lobbyists to take us around, to meet with the appropriate people, to please let them know how, what a dire situation. I mean, we, we have it funded, we're ready to get things going, but it's being stopped for whatever reason. And I would suggest send a delegation up there, as well as get everybody here involved and let's, let's get moving and put a full court press on getting this road built.
Barbara?
Well, we have another very similar project that has successfully been built, and that's the Nemo Five, because we had to go through an, an area that was unbuilt, it had to be completely done. What do we got? A couple of bridges in there. And it, it's wonderful and, and it, and, and we did a good job. We haven't upset the environment. And I think just showing what Nemo Five looks like and how good that is and accommodates that, that environmental area, because that, that area is just about as sensitive as this other. So I think we've got that, that very example right within this, this system. And, and, and it shows what we did to make certain that we were respecting the environment and, and accommodating these things. So I, I think we, having that example is, is, should be pretty strong evidence for us of how well we can do it.
And Congressman Henley, to your point, that is true. And it's one of the things that we did articulate when we got those comments from the regulatory agencies, that we do have a track record of being as effective as we can to the needs of the wetlands and animals there as well. And we were hoping that would change the course to keep us in the path of the environmental assessment. We still wasn't able to move it, but I think to your point and the vice president's point and the mayor's point, with this incident, it does give us another opportunity to ramp it up and then we can also, also talk about just how sensitive we are when we actually start building in there as well.
You know, I'm gonna say something that, you know, some folks, you know, maybe not like. And, you know, once again, I think the plans that we have are more than sensitive to Fish and Wildlife. But when push comes to shove, the safety of human beings and residents in Sandbridge are the priority that, that would have come down. I think we have a plan that is costing us a lot more money to accommodate some of the concerns. But, you know, but, you know, the thing is, we had some discussions, I am willing to go to Washington, I know our, a couple of our delegations, you know, me, Barbara, the manager, whoever, you know, you know, we, we have to be visible and we have to be vocal. Okay, this is an emergency situation. And we've been lucky so far, because God forbid, there's a tornado or hurricane of magnitude and, and we're coming into hurricane season pretty soon. And we gotta show the, you know, the folks out in Sandbridge and everybody, you know, because they've been asking for this ever since I got elected in 2004. Okay, and, you know, let's be decisive, and, you know, let's move forward and this is something we gotta get. All right, thank you for the conversation. Anything else? Barbara?
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Two comments or topics of discussion. First, First Annual Strawberry Fest 2025 occurred on Saturday. It was a very, very busy Saturday in the city across the region, but first three blocks from, on Laskin Road in what is now known as the artery, from Laskin, excuse me, from Pacific Avenue to the roundabout, about three blocks were closed down Saturday morning for the Strawberry Fest. Member of the file, next year, there will be a lot more strawberries. There was a little snafu on that, but a great compliment to Jesse Whitley, the author on the, inventor of the artery and this festival. And thanks to my colleagues, Councilman Berluci and Councilman Shulman for participating in the strawberry pie eating contest. It's a first, a lot of good chuckles out of that and a good tasting, but thank you, Mr. Whitley, for that and look forward to next year. And then second, on a more somber note, I continue to hear council colleagues from residents, business owners and citizens outside of the resort about continued concern about public safety at the resort. We had an incident last Saturday, two incidents last Saturday night and of course College Beach Weekend a few weeks ago. I'm hearing from a lot of folks who are not, this is an issue that I think we need to up our game on and consider more discussion. Patrick?
Yeah, so I heard from several members of council regarding the incidents and the safety concerns there. And the police chief is gonna be working to give city council a briefing on some of the issues and the challenges we have there, some of the incidents, overall look at where we are in terms of crime in the resort, some, some challenges we have and some legislative changes that we possibly need, that's not in the realm of the council's ability to do, but the general assembly support would be needed. And also some other programs we're seeing that other cities are being able, are using right now that we'll ask council to possibly consider for us to probably include in our legislative package in a future general session, general assembly session.
And we're gonna be talking about that on June 3rd. And the other thing I requested also is a concurrent, you know, a same day conversation as, you know, the homeless situation, you know, is, you know, also present out at the oceanfront, it's also showing an uptick at Town Center. I had a 711 owner on Newtown Road, where people are just coming in. You know, once again, it's, it, it's a situation, and I think we have to have a discussion in public to let people know what we can do and what we can't do. And, you know, once again, you know, Mark, you know, is in between a rock and a hard place. And, you know, let me put it this way, if there were solutions out there, they would be out there. You can go to some city, you know, when, you know, back in 2018, the mayor of Ocean City came down to talk to me about what to do with the homeless. And he said they had folks setting up on tents on their beach and, and, by court order, they were not allowed to, you know, aggressively intercede. And if you take a look at, you know, some of the situations going on out in California and everything, you know, people are literally leaving in streets. And the thing is, we have a problem. It, it's, it's not, let's not call it a problem, we have a situation. You know, we have to realize that we're dealing with human beings and to, you know, to allow them to be treated with respect and dignity. But once again, I think it's gonna take a broad approach of, I approached the, the Hampton Roads Planning Council a couple of years ago, you know, we had a youth violence task force, you know, this is a regional situation, you know, of, you know, crime and homelessness is not on any border. So we're gonna talk about on the regional, you know, Patrick's involved in those discussions or police chiefs, you know? But then again, between elections and a few other things, we put things on the back burner, but especially now with the summer season approaching. So we gotta do a multi-pronged approach, not only from the regional level, but, you know, we just have to, we're gonna have the discussion on, you know, June 3rd and, you know, to figure out a game plan. But once again, I think a lot of the frustrations are, you know, we're gonna involve general assembly action to empower, you know, the little stick, what should I tell you? Joe?
Mr. Mayor, I am so glad that you're talking about this and this, this topic of the race, because, I mean, I, like we all do, I mean, I've, I've gotten increasingly, actually over the last couple of weeks, calls from residents who are, you know, with, with public safety concerns in, in Town Center, just like you, was copying some emails along with the councilwoman here. And I mean, when, when I'm, when I'm at home at night and the lights are out, I've been hearing sirens running up Independence Boulevard all night long. And I know our third precinct has been busy. I know a lot of the other precincts have been busy and, you know, thank God for our police officers. I just wanna say, I mean, you know, they, they, they have to prioritize, they have to respond to where the, the need is the greatest and, and life and property are in danger and, and sometimes obviously incredibly challenging situations they face. And then they support people in other precincts too, when they're tied up on, on calls. So I, you know, my, an Achilles heel or pain point for me in, in our, in my council district has been the Lynn Haven Boat Ramp. And, you know, we've, we've spent two and a half years working on implementing solutions around some of the activity that goes on there, you know, the drag racing, the donuts and such. We've, we've put cameras and speed bumps and we've increased signage and, you know, bumped the hours for the people that worked there for Parks and Rec. And, you know, there, you are exactly right in terms of, you know, people need to understand what we can do and what we can't do. And, and people need to also know that we are actively trying to confront these situations like the one in Town Center, like the ones at the resort, with all the resources and the time and the people that we can. But we have a big city and we, we have, we're fortunate to have the professional law enforcement, you know, community that we do and the first responders that we do. And, and I think everybody needs to remember what a wonderful, comparatively speaking, like what you said, what a wonderfully safe community that we live in and that I think a little bit of grace needs to be shown sometimes by our residents, to our public safety community.
Okay, great. Jennifer?
Bill, on the conversation, some of the concerns in District 10 in particular, and Councilmember Berluci may, here's similar things, Independence and Holland, speaking of the donuts and the racing. So there have been efforts with the city manager and staff to meet with, and myself included, some of the owners and operators of the car washes around the district off of Independence Holland, because there are frequent car meetups Friday nights and Saturday nights and oftentimes, you know, maybe they'll go till nine, 10, but then afterwards, it's just engines all night long down Independence and down Holland. So we've gotten emails and some of us have gotten emails about that. And so I just wanna also add that to the conversation that, you know, public safety in terms of racing, but public nuisance as well. So the noise ordinance and the frustration of residents who are trying to rest, but they just hear this all night. So I'd like to have a conversation as a council or perhaps a presentation about what we can do, because there's efforts, we're trying, you know, but also what we, you know, where our hands might be tied in terms of enforcing some of these noise complaints and the racing and the issues, so, you know, what the police are actively doing. I know that they have sent more patrols and so I appreciate that, the efforts in my precincts, but I know the public is really frustrated with that particular issue off of Independence and Holland, so I'd like to get an update on that too. Thank you.
I think it's, you know, it's generic across the city, that, you know, we have to say, this isn't, we're not gonna pick on, you know, you know, one individual thing, you know, this is a problem societies have in all over this country. And, you know, it's just, it, it's a confident, it's a situation that we have to confront, but we gotta do it in the right way. And, you know, Patrick?
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, when the chief comes to present, he's gonna point out some things that happened through some, through some general assembly sessions where the pendulum swung one way and it may be time that there's an appropriate discussion about possibly the pendulum swinging legislatively another way, right? And, you know, some things that used to be primary offenses were moved to secondary offenses and it may make sense to bring back some of those, maybe not all of those, you know, back to being primary offenses, to give the police officers some opportunities to be more proactive on addressing some issues. We'll talk about those, we'll, we'll bring those things to you all and likely probably ask for support of moving forward with some of them. As the mayor mentioned, the mayors from all the cities have been talking about this of late, some mayors have even, some mayors and councils have even included in their legislative package. I think they never, they, they weren't able to make it through this, this last general assembly session, but I think- but I think where Mayor Dyer and the mayors have been talking about it at HRPDC is possibly seeing if there's something that they, all the cities could possibly agree to in terms of things that we all asked for collectively to see if we can push forward with having our delegation respond to something that comes from all the cities. You know, but it's going to be, it's going to be a policy conversation that's going to bring out a healthy debate from the bodies of, from our body, the city council and probably from those other cities as well, you know. And I hope you all listen to it and then give us your feedback and the guidance that you all have.
You know, I'll tell you, you know, what's heartening. This started with when Mayor Tuck from Hampton gave me a shout and said, we got to do something about youth violence. Pretty much during COVID. And, but I can tell you that the mayor said the 757, and it's not party lines, it's not racial and everything, is that we have a problem that we have to address. Yeah. Stacy?
Oh, I was just going to mention, especially to do with the homeless, some people don't want to be housed. And that is a serious education that we need to take up with them because serving on the Housing Advisory Board, we get that. Where you try to move them even in Town Center, where we have someone hired, you know, Roosevelt, who comes in, but we still have that problem that some people don't. And also we've noticed that some of the homeless rarely know their rights. That is, that is a tough situation to handle. Thank you.
Stacy?
I also think that one of the things we need to be sensitive to is some of the other beach communities, especially on the East Coast, have really cracked down on their tolerance for this type of behavior. Have come up with ordinances and come up with strategies to eliminate it and basically have shut those beaches down in certain times of the year. And that's just going to put more and more pressure on us if we don't act now.
Stacy, if I can point out, you know, we had a robust discussion not too long ago. And it was important, look at all the good things Miami's done to really control. They're a home rule state. You know, we can't call a curfew unless we go by certain protocols. You know, we're limited. I can almost, you know, predict that a lot of the states that are doing that are home rule states. What's your opinion on that, Patrick? We have to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, we've talked about it because when you contacted me, you asked me a series of questions about different things that we can use, for example, curfews or enhanced procedures for traffic enforcement and like special event zones that folks have been talking about that's going on in Florida. A lot of those things, and we're still working on a presentation with the chief and we'll bring some of those ideas to you all. We, we've identified that we would need special General Assembly legislation to take action on those. One of the big things that I think we're, and I don't want to say constrain because, I mean, it's due process, right? It's America. It's that police are reacting to something, that something has to happen before they can take action, right? Some of these other places are able, are able with certain level of information to take more proactive actions. To get there, we would need legislative support from the General Assembly. And we'll bring some ideas to the city council, you know, to see if you all want us to ask for some of those things.
Yep.
I, I would like us to, as being boots on the ground, being with the people. I, I know of several car companies or car clubs, right? Because you get a chance to know the community when you are campaigning or you're doing community activities. I do think it's important that we somehow have a discussion with those individuals who are leaders of these car clubs because I think that we, we want to listen, right? We understand that a lot of people are working and then they want to spend their free time showing off their new car. But I think we need to have a discussion. As long as we have a discussion with them, we want them to know we hear them, but there are consequences that will follow. So I think that I would love for us to somehow, because I represent them too, right? They're at work right now. And, but I know that they have families, they're law-abiding citizens. And so they would just like to participate in the conversation.
I'll tell you what, you know, it's very tough because you want to treat everybody with respect and dignity. And we have a problem, you know, with youth not having some stuff to do sometime. And Michael, you remember a number of years ago at Lynn Haven Mall, we had a number of incidences and they did impose, you know, some restrictions. And I read it the other day, there, in an inner city, there's a McDonald's that you have to be buzzed in and you have to be 21. I mean, this is what is happening. This is a reality that's happening out, out there that, you know, has to be handled i- in a delicate way with empathy, but it has to be emphatic, you know, because it affect, people, you know, Worth, you were saying that, you know, when people see, you know, some of the stuff going on over the couple of weekends and when people, it's, people get scared, you know? But once again, you know, trying to, you know, find that balance is going to take some discussion, but we're going to have it on June 3rd. Yes, Stacy?
Number subject, e-bikes have become very popular lately and will only get more and more popular. And it seems as though we don't have a lot of regulations around these e-bikes. And I've received a number of complaints from constituents saying that some very young people are riding these bikes at a high rate of speed, no helmets, there's no restrictions. We have restrictions on mopeds, motorcycles, what have you, but on these e-bikes, we don't. So an eight-year-old, a 10-year-old could be riding an e-bike at 20, 25 miles an hour down the street, no helmet. And, well, they have to have a helmet. But they could be, they could be riding an e-bike at eight, 10 years old with no restriction except for wearing a helmet if you're under 14. But something that I think we should look at is some types of regulations or ordinances concerning e-bikes. They're, they're wonderful, contrast, I'm not, not trashing them, but they need to be used properly by people that are responsible enough to know.
To heighten up, you know, a number of years ago at the oceanfront, they had those little scooter thing. And I, I tell you what, you would see two adults on them at one time with no helmet. You would see eight years old, they're driving on the sidewalk and everything. But once again, I think, you know, that's a proven, you know, thing we got to do. Please.
Well, they're also on the boardwalk where you've got, I'm, I'm out there walking my little dog and children and older people. And these e-bikes, they're flying and it's dangerous because they're not, they shouldn't be where pedestrians are. And we have a bike path. And it's, and police have a lot more important things I know to enforce than the bike path and the boardwalk. But somebody's going to get hurt. Somebody's going to get hurt. Hope it's not us.
No, but I'll tell you what, you know, I totally agree with you because, you know, I'll tell you what, you know, like I said, I, in my career, you know, as a therapist, four and a half decades, a lot of the close head injuries and severe injuries I have are people that got into those kind of accidents with those things. Those are dangerous. Anybody else? Jennifer?
Pivot a little bit, but bikes, positive and helmets are involved.
Oh, thank you.
I've seen kids like that. I did a double take, I was driving and I was like, wow, these kids, you know, made me very nervous. But for, yay for ATAC. So it's Bike Month, as a reminder.
Not e-bikes.
Just, you know, so Bike Month. So bike, walk and walk and roll to school events are exceeding expectations. So 500 students, parents and faculty have participated with the first four schools. Two more events are scheduled. So this is all collaboration with the schools, elementary schools, Parks and Rec, our VVPD, Active Transportation Advisory Commission volunteers and JNA Racing. So I know Hutch has already been doing it and he puts us all to shame, but if you're able to hop on a bike or walk or roll somewhere this month, please do that with your helmets.
All turn on it.
And the crosswalks.
Turn on it, dude, you're over 60 miles this weekend, I'll just say.
And shout out to Walter Camp, yeah.
I did ride last Friday with my daughter and my grandchildren too. John B died, so they had well over 200.
I pushed a stroller to.
So we're all doing it.
Hey Jennifer, just being on the safe side, I'll help you with the stroller. Now, yeah.
Just again, for, just for awareness, we got a concern from a constituency we talked about, they got, they got a sneak preview of the Central Beach District Comprehensive Plan. And apparently it does not include any kind of buffer zone around the Veterans War Memorial. And they just wanted to have some type of recognition or maybe some type of buffer zone around these monuments that we have erected to honor our veterans.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, told some of the veterans groups who were involved with that, the praise we have. And, you know, I gave them kind of my word that, that memorial is sacred ground. And I think that's the way you should. Yeah, okay.
Yes, thanks, because we were at the meat, um, meeting and someone brought it up too. Okay.
Barbara, you had your hand up. When there was mention of strawberries, she had her. One of the reasons I wasn't at the Strawberry Festival eating strawberries, I got to spend Saturday with Cash Green.
That's right.
Yeah. And in the morning, we, we had 200-plus men, you know, recognition at the oceanfront. It was really kind of cool. And then in the after, you know, you go ahead and tell them about the afternoon. That was pretty cool.
It was very amazing. We had, we met at Salem Middle from 11 to 3 PM. We had kids signing up, we had excited parents. And we had Joe Smith, NBA Hall of Famer, and as well as Virginia.
University of Maryland grad.
Okay, right. Thank you, thank you. And so he was there signing autograph with the kids. And that was very memorable because what we're trying to do is change the trajectory of what you think about District 7, what you think about Virginia Beach. We are about sports tourism. And so there was a lot of energy there. And so the kids were there, they were excited, he signed in autographs. And we had people from all around really come around and sign up and register. So it was a good event.
There we go. We ended this on a positive. All right, how about, you know, what's a gender review?
So number two, why do you speak? I followed in, I had to leave a message to the two, the two ladies speakers and they all called each other, they're all, they all talked. So I don't believe they'll.
Thank you.
Number.
Yeah, please. Wait, maybe we're not there yet. Wait, I have a comment on the plan.
Okay, well, what?
I'm sorry, we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not there yet. Six and nine each have one speaker, just so y'all know. So, all right, so going back, under ordinance and resolutions, is everybody okay with everything there?
I wanted to ask you.
Planning or?
That one is to submit the task, the task force recommendations came to council. This is now to send it to planning commission, so planning commission to get, bring back the policy advice, I think we should handle it.
And we talked about it a little bit, it's just as far as my concern, what I thought about this, as far as the decks collapsing. And, and I don't remember exact, I did talk to staff and I just want to make sure that they look at that section again, the recommendation. I think we went with three years and then A could sign off, but it had to be somebody underneath them. I'm not 100% sure where we were, but I just want to make sure that was covered. So we don't have any deck accidents and stuff, what I was concerned with.
So this is going to get to.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to give them a heads up, like, don't forget that part.
You might want to let your planning commissioner, who that needs to be in the room.
He's already, why you think I'm talking about it?
We'll take it as guidance. To make sure that our staff pays particular attention to that because I remember that came up in the conversation about the possible change in the deck rules and council expressed some concern there. So, yep. Yeah, so looking at the staff there, we'll make sure that it's highlighted as part of the conversation.
Barbara, do you have something?
Well, I think I have pulled this. So you all are addressing it on the short-term rental thing. Okay. I guess I, I think we've got to be careful what we're changing here. We might be undoing some things that we had planned. Glad you're on top of that.
So there's been a request for an add-on under ordinance and resolutions. Pass this around. And we can't add it on here, we'd have to add it on out there. We have to have a, how many votes? Nine votes? Eight votes? Add this on and so, this is an honorary, now this is to honor Andrew Fine and what he's done with the vibe in the culture district to do Cypress Avenue between 17th and 21st Street. To have Andy Fine, I mean, or something. Worth, did you want to say something?
Sure. So this, tonight, one of the resolutions is to honor the Bob's 10th year anniversary, which we celebrated, celebrated back in April, but it's going to be read tonight. Mr. Fine, Mr. Andrew Fine, was co-founder of the Bob District along with Laura Wood. And so this celebrates his legacy. And this is a surprise, that's the right way to characterize this.
Is he watching? As much a surprise as we could make it.
I won't go there, but.
Watch this, I'm sure.
That's why we're adding it on now because it was supposed to be a surprise for him, not adding it on our regular agenda. So, but we'll have to vote out there to add it to the agenda. Do we want it to be pulled? I mean, after we've added, or do you want it to?
We'll have to have a separate vote to add it. And then the question is, do you want a separate vote or do you want it part of the consent agenda?
Worth, what do you want?
Why don't we, why don't we actually vote on it after, just to show?
Well, and I think you'll have something to present as well, so it's probably best to.
Do you have something?
Yeah, yeah, because where, yes, I, there's a proclamation, I want you to read it. And then we'll go ahead and, you know, we'll vote on it separately and give them a standing ovation.
Right. So we'll add this to the agenda and then we'll, then we'll vote on it separately after consent.
Yep.
Everybody, is that clear as mud?
Yeah, this is a worthy cause.
Everything is definitely tentative. Thank you.
Everyone should come down.
Yes, I agree. All right, let's go over to planning. So number one, Millwood Associates District 8.
Comment on that.
Okay.
My son, who's not with me and is not a defendant, has accepted employment with the shards, who were the members of Millwood, starting in August, so he's not even working there yet. In any event, I've been advised as, you know, conflicted out. I just want to bring that to the attention of. And I've spoken to.
You're not conflicted out?
I'm not conflicted out. And I've spoken to both sides of this, the community, and there's, there was no dispute amongst the parties. They're all.
And there's no speakers, so you consent?
So I'm fine with being, so bring that out.
Okay, and then there's number two, the Borough Pit, which.
Council members can ask for a 30-day, or till June 18th? Excuse me, June 17th, deferral on item number two in plan. It's the Borough Pit, change of condition.
And we're very grateful for that.
Could I just ask if we could have some alternatives? I mean, are y'all looking at what alternatives might be as a part of this deferral?
And that, to me, that should be a part of this deferral is a discussion, more thorough vetting of other potential sites in the city. And I know there's costs involved, but there's also, there's costs involved.
Well, I, I think the situation is that you're going to be. I, I think the situation is that you're gonna be doing the same thing someplace else.
True.
And so what is an alternative?
Right.
Well, an alternative might be how you can improve the site, so make sure there's not gonna, not gonna be any flooding and things like that.
Right, so if there are things that, that we can do at this site.
Right.
Because like I say, you're gonna have the very same issue anywhere else, that is the objection to this one, that was the objection at the council. I mean, it's gonna be a different soil. And if we've got to do something with dredge material, anywhere we put it, it's gonna be different from any Borough Pit that was created because those were created to get sand. So that issue is going to be the same anywhere if you're gonna, so i- is there any other alternative?
We will, we will provide a write-up to council on that and another briefing if council wants a briefing on it. Frankly, within the timeframe that we need, there are other alternatives. The big thing about is if you wanna create a Borough Pit, you need to get a mining license or a mining permit, those are gonna take a while to get. And then if you take the spools, you gotta put the spools somewhere else, right? So if you, it's like mishandling, to your point, these were Borough Pits, right? The soil went to go build Virginia Beach, build infrastructure in Virginia Beach. If we dig a hole, we gotta put the, we gotta put the dirt or the spools somewhere else and that's the complication that we have in addition to getting the, um, mining permit. But we'll talk about all the things that we can do to mitigate. We'll explain the fact that if for some reason, in the unlikely event the city causes any damages to people's water tanks, we'll be responsible for repairing it or, uh, giving, giving them city water or buying properties. We'll explain all of that stuff, but there aren't any easy alternatives that we could do in a timely fashion that does not adversely impact the city's dredging programs for ourselves and also the SSD dredging program in the various districts of the city that needs the dredging programs. If we change this course, it's gonna lead to a significant increase in the cost of the SSD program on the residents, not only that, not only the residents, but also the cost of our dredging program as well.
30 days enough, Patrick?
I was thinking it might not be.
We can, if council wants to do it for 45 days. If council wanna make us come back in July, that's fine. I would just say, the longer we push this, the, the more uncertainty you create in our dredging program, but we can probably take a 45-day one if y'all wanna do a 45-day.
I, I think we should stay at 30 because the bottom line is, your alternatives are extremely expensive, correct?
Yes, sir. And also, you gotta get permits on, for those things as well, and some of the areas may not allow for those things and may require conditional use permits and, and other zoning require plus as well.
Okay, uh, Josh?
Just a, a quick question on the other side of that, is 30 days too much time?
Yeah.
So, so my, cause I, I think I asked one, maybe two questions last time when, when LJ was up there, was one is how short is this fuse? And is 30 days workable?
I don't, so Mr. Remick asked LJ and I if 30 days would work and 30 days doesn't break anything. I, we get uncomfortable if we go beyond that. If you went 45, we'd probably be fine, but if you go two months, three months, then we're, we're gonna have concern because I think as LJ mentioned, we need to start doing this, using this site probably in 20, early '26.
Yes, sir, but we, we do need to do some improvements to the site before then.
Yeah, let's go ahead and keep it at 30.
All right. Then, number three. Smith, and that's in District Nine.
Um, I've not heard anything about that, consent.
Four, Erica Fritz and, uh, heard no complaints. Five is, uh, set building and that's recommended for withdrawal. Is everybody okay with that? Uh, number six, there is one speaker. District Seven. Don Fedover, Fedoverich.
I haven't heard anything about that.
Consent. Uh, number, number seven is the Auto Glass and Sunroof, District Four.
Yes, um, I'm going for approval and I would like to extend that time to five years for them and put in the planters in front, just beautification purposes.
We need to write that up, pass that out to the council with the modification. Mr. Styles?
Vice Mayor, also on number six, uh, she represents an applicant group, she is representing a group, so we need to give her 10 minutes. Uh, so I don't know how you, if you wanna pull that separately or just give her 10 minutes and keep it off consent.
What would you like to do, Mr. Green? You wanna pull it?
Yes, I think that that's a wise thing to do for now.
Okay, we'll pull number six.
Okay, seven with modifications is on consent. Uh, number nine is Patrick Bowers, um, so this is in District Five and I, I know that there's, the planning commission was 5-5, um, I'm gonna go ahead and put this on consent.
For approval?
Approval, mhm. Number nine, there is one speaker.
That's just the applicant.
Okay, only if there's opposition.
Consent, please.
Alrighty, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open, open meetings allowed by Section 2.237 11A, Florida, Virginia, as amended for the following purposes, legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237 11A8. That would be Atlantic Park, publicly held property, excuse me, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A3. That would be District Two, District Six, District Six, District Six. All right, and public contract, uh, discussion and award of the public contract involving the expect, uh, of public funds and the discussion of terms of such contracts where discussion in an open, uh, session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A29. That is Project Ramp and then personnel matters, discussions, considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disboarding or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of any, uh, public body pursuant, pursuant to Section 2.237 11A1. And that's council appointments to boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do we have a motion? So moved.
Second.
All right.
Councilor Vlade, Councilor Cummings, Councilor Henley?
Aye.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Aye.
Councilor Jackson Green?
Aye.
Councilor Rymm?
Aye.
Councilor Los Hamon?
Aye.
Councilor Ralph?
Aye.
Councilor Shulman?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye. Hey, we are recessing to close.